Mike?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Moffitt. Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odiger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. We will, everyone take, have a chance to take a look at the minutes of the previous meeting. I would ask if there are any additions, deletions, subtractions. If not, we'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Alright, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of previous meetings as presented. We'll, if there are no other additions or questions to the motion, we'll approve by the normal sign of aye. And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. We have an item on the agenda for proclamations of recognition of the citizens by the mayor. I was prepared to present to the teen board, teen board members that were present last month in Knoxville for teen board. Sometimes I think we forget, or we kind of get a little jaded to what our young people are doing, but while I was there that night, there were quite a few young people, teenagers, that were doing some very positive things and I wanted to recognize those young ladies tonight, but for whatever reason, they were not able to make it. I don't see any of them in the audience. So, we'll postpone that until next, next time. Communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing on my agenda, and I think everybody's aware, but just to reiterate, the Tanner Restoration Project is underway. We've done the asbestos abatement and the general contract work has begun. They spent the last few weeks demoing additional materials that needed to come out and the fire inspector talking today, he was gonna go by and check for sure today or tomorrow when I'll be made by there, but he said it looked like the actual construction had begun and just went through the doorway. So, hopefully that'll move along and stay on track and on time. The other thing that I have, it's another issue that I'd like to get y'all's feelings on and possibly put it on the agenda for next month. I've had some complaints primarily up around English Street that where the new Bryant Town, the re-furbished Bryant Town Park is located. And since we have brought the park back to life, some of the residents have been complaining about people riding a little too fast through there and just want to know that we do something about the speed limit and also about enforcement. And in thinking about it, what I propose, if you all are in agreement, is that, as you currently, well, first of all, you currently, you know that over by the main city park, the speed limit's 20 miles an hour. And the reason being is because of kids coming and going to the park. And what I would like to propose is making a mandatory 20 miles per hour speed limit at all city parks. So that if there's a city park in the neighborhood, kinda like a school zone, be a park, be a park zone, and that we can basically make all park, uh, speed limit within the vicinity of all city parks to be 20 miles per hour. And if you all are in agreement with that, I'll put that on the agenda for the November meeting and that'll give us time to order the signs and get everything we need to get them marked. So, but if you are in agreement with that, I'd like to put that on the November agenda to make our park zones more safer.
Mr. Board's pleasure. Okay. Put it on the agenda.
Thank you, that's all we got.
That's all you got, alright. Alright, next item on the agenda is the appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Item A, consideration of appointment of police civil service to complete Conway Wilson's term. You should, the board should have in their packet a copy of Mr. Wilson's resignation letter and we're looking to fill that position. So, the floor is now open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Arthur Stiles.
Any other nominations? Okay, we have one nomination on the board then. Boards who require a motion to approve that or just approval?
Just a vote.
Just a vote? For Arthur Stiles. All in favor? Unanimous for Mr. Stiles. And consideration of reappointment of New, to the Newport Housing Board, Mr. Mitchell Webb. If there are no other nominations for that position, we'll consider that Mr., uh, the reappointment of Mr. Webb. All in favor? Unanimous for Mr. Webb. Thank you. Reports from committees, members of council, and other offices. Tanner Preservation Alliance. Gary, would you like to add anything?
Now, uh, for the demolition, we should have subcontractors and if not this week, sometime next week to start on plumbing, electrical, HVAC, all that sort of stuff. So, it's, uh, going along. Phase one of the, or, uh, not phase one, but just first part of the build here, so we're still a long way away from getting in there, looking around, but it's different for sure.
Okay. Okay, old business, unfinished business. Item A, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2019-06, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read that capture that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2019-06, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2019-2020.
Okay. You've heard the, um, consideration of that ordinance, 2019-06 budget amendment for the city of Newport. Are there any questions? If not, then we'll consider approval, but I guess we need to take, make them have a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to accept the second reading of the 2019-06 budget amendment. Second.
Alright, we have a, have a motion on the floor and it has been properly seconded. We'll, if there are no other questions to the motion, we'll approve by the normal sign of aye. And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. New business. Consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2019-07, amending the city of Newport municipal code, Title 10, Animal Control, Chapter 2, Dogs and Cats, Section 10-207, Number of Animals. It's the first reading.
This is the issue we discussed last month about amending the, the dog and cat ordinance to allow anyone with hospice animals to apply for exemption from the rule with a filing of $25 fee and an application process would be reviewed by a committee. And they would require that it be renewed annually and as the animals pass away, they could not be replaced until they get down to the, the number of four animals. And it may be required by the city that veterinary proof be provided that, of the, of the animals' condition.
Board's pleasure, we will, that is the first reading? Board's pleasure, will only be on the agenda for next month for?
No, it's on this time, yes, we talked about it last month and it's on our this time.
For first reading?
Yes.
We need a motion. Okay, alright. We entertain a motion then to approve that, that ordinance, dash, number 2019-07.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions to that motion? Hearing none, will approve by the normal sign of aye. And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Item B, consideration of water line existence for Rack Lane. Alderwoman Luanna Odiger.
Take the town, we got to the town.
Um, Mr. Jake Green approached me about extending the water line to, um, the houses on Rack Lane that's located right behind the Newport Grammar School, or I'm sorry, behind the grease rack. And in our books, it has the breakdown of the cost. If there's three houses on that street and if all three houses connect, we'll have a net cost of $5,000 to, to supply water.
For some reason, when we, we looked into this, when Ms. Odiger talked to, to me about it and I've been looking into it, the city ran sewer up that street but never ran water. And when we talked to Clint about it and he's here, if you have any questions from him, it's odd that that would happen, that you would usually, you more, it's more common to have water and not sewer than it is to have sewer and not water. So, that was kind of an odd occurrence that happened, but for whatever reason, it happened. And these folks don't have access to water.
And they would last.
Sure enough, usually it's the same one, but that was probably the drainage base of all the creek, so we did that going behind the grease rack, all the natural drainage and that's, that's been in place, I think, since the 60s. So, the sewer didn't have to years, but that's the development happening with the water that was there.
But it, it would be our recommendation that we provide a water line.
Okay. Need a, a motion then to approve the consideration of first reading on ordinance 20, number 2019-07? I'm sorry, that's the wrong, that's the wrong one.
Water line.
Water line extension, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to, for the water line extension. Second.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded. Other questions to the motion? Okay, hearing none, will approve by the normal sign of aye. And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Consideration of Stokely Memorial Library Roof Repair Donation.
As y'all remember, back in early summer, we had a couple of pretty major storms come through town, did quite a bit of damage throughout downtown, especially up, uh, on the east side here and down River Street and then that whole area up there here. And a tree, pretty good sized tree, fell on the library, did some damage to the roof. After that, several of you all approached me expressing an interest in helping the library to repair the roof. And so, I spoke with some board members and told them about our desire to try to help them with that and so, a couple of weeks ago, they finally got the, got the settlement with the insurance and everything and so, it, it came back that the insurance paid for everything but $1,900. And so, again, speaking to some of y'all, I put in your recommendation that we make a one-time donation to the library of $1,000 to assist with the repair of the roof.
And what's the board's pleasure? Do not need a motion for that, do we?
Yeah.
We do?
We need a motion.
And a motion to approve, consideration of Stokely Memorial Library Roof Repair Donation of $1,000?
I'll make that motion.
Alright. Alright, we have a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded. Other questions to the motion? If not, we will approve by the normal sign of aye. And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Consideration of Cock County Health Council holding a fall meeting on the River Walk behind City Hall. Carly, would you?
We, the health council. So, I'm a member of the health council. We have a, a special fall meeting and we usually try to have it somewhere around town in one of the parks or outside, so we're just, it's a meeting, it starts at 11:30. We should be through by 1:00.
We're looking for approval to hold, the health council holding the fall meeting on the River Walk behind City Hall.
I make a motion. Second.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to approve the, uh, health council holding the fall meeting on the River Walk behind City Hall. It's been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approve by the normal sign of aye. And all opposed.
It's October, Tuesday afternoon.
Okay. Alright, discussion of grass clippings in the streets. Mr. Alderman Mike Hansel.
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, I think you guys discussed it somewhat, I wasn't here because I had to work, but I would like to have a little more discussion about it. I think it's a good thing. I spoke with Ben Hicks today and from what I understand, there's been some previous moves towards that in the past. It is a public safety hazard, I think, especially for people on motorcycles. Some people might think what we're doing is some type of government overreach, but I think you'll always find people disagree with that, but I think also, it's, being it's a public safety issue, I think we're sort of like the police officers to some, uh, some regards, we have a due diligence, you know, to protect the town and make the appropriate legislations known to control those type of things. Like I spoke to Ben today and he's definitely for it. Grass clippings, not only just, they're unsightly, but they clog up our storm drains, that and all the other types of trash that gets out there. But I guess one of the things, I just, when do we start looking at enforcement on this? If I live next to Luanna and I start blowing grass out in the street, she's gonna get on the phone, call me, Mike's over there blowing grass out in the street, do something about it. But, but I mean, that's just some, some of the questions, I guess we need to know how to deal with it. Do we give them 24 hours, 36 hours, 15 minutes after they're through? But what I'd like to do, what I'd like for the council is go ahead and make, I'd like to make the motion tonight that we give James the authority, start looking into this, maybe look at some other cities and towns and see what they're doing in regards to this and go from there with it.
I think it's an excellent idea. I actually looked into, to see if there was an ordinance that we already had that might cover that, like a littering ordinance, but I don't think we have one that would cover grass clippings, so.
The only thing that I've been able to find is there is an ordinance that says you cannot do anything that will clog a storm drain, but that is very vague.
Yeah, very vague.
Says you can't do anything, I mean, it's hard to show that that's their intent or, I think that's pretty vague. I don't know that you could say, well, you can't mow out because you'd have, you'd have to show that there's a storm drain being directly affected by to enforce that, so that's something I've been.
But I did, the research I did, uh, showed that there are other towns that pass a grass clipping ordinance.
Yes.
All across the country, so I think we can probably pattern one, uh, like other towns do and make it effective and enforce it.
Well, I think the best you can do, you're gonna get some grass in the road, but when you just blanket the whole street. It just, I, I mow once a week and I've seen, seems like some people, I guess, don't take the pride that they used to and they wait for like a month at a time and when they blow that amount of grass out in the street, I mean, they should just at least take the courage to take a blower to it and blow it back in. Now, me personally, I mow with my catcher about four or five rounds where it blows back then and I turn it around, it blows back even with the grass, but like I said, not everybody's gonna take that consideration. Like I said, I don't want this to be just something, you know, that I'm trying to force on everybody. If you've got any thoughts or comments, I'd be glad to hear any discussion.
Well, for, as for myself, being an avid motorcycle myself, I, I think it's a great idea and I try to avoid it whenever I see it on, if I'm riding, I, you have to avoid those clippings, uh, because they are a hazard. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea and I think, you know, we should give James every authority to look into an ordinance. Uh, we can research that and see what we can come up with, present it for the next, next meeting.
I'd be glad to do that. The reason I brought it up last month during my portion was the fact that this summer I had received so many complaints about it and I tried to explain to the public when they called in that we had, that we have no enforcement for the over it, but I, that I would resist it to you guys and late. And so, I, I did that, that's what I was doing last month, was make the grant with your attention, because I have had a lot of complaints and I told them that that's all I can do would be bringing y'all's attention and to see if y'all were interested in placing some kind of regulation in place. You know, every summer we've had complaints, but this summer has, for whatever reason, has been the worst that I've had.
Ben thought White Pine might have something that we could look into?
Oh, we'll, we'll check around, see what we.
And enforcement of this, it would follow on codes?
Yes, that would be the codes, uh, which, I mean, theoretically, the police department could enforce them too. The police department can enforce any code, it is like the codes enforcement can. What I, you know, you mentioned earlier about when you do it, many, if they throw them out there, I, what the way I would look at it, kind of just take a common sense approach, would be to wait until they are done and make sure that when they are done, give them opportunity to, as you said, to blow them back out of the road. And then, if they put all their stuff up and go to the house, it's obviously done.
Can, can we give Mark a break if we?
Yeah, yeah.
I think even a few years of private company, do your own work, now they're still responsible.
Yes, yeah. Would you like to put your, put into a motion to allow James to?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to allow James to look into the, uh, discussion of an, uh, an ordinance, fine ordinance, says for grass clippings in the street. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? If not, will approve by the normal sign of aye. All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Next is consideration of bids for used truck for parks and recreation.
James doesn't think codes are the best because we probably mow more, more, more property than anybody in town on the street sides and, uh, sometimes we blow it in the street also and have to lick our calf twice and make sure to get them clippings out of the street, so, uh, it'll be an education for our staff because, uh, they're used to hitting them big lawn mowers and going and not paying any attention. I think it's a great idea though and, and I'll have to pay more attention to it at my home because on College Street, when I mow up there, I kind of just blow out in the middle of the street. So, waiting, because I know the street sweeper comes on Thursdays and he sweeps it all up, so, but I'm gonna have to pay more attention to that. So, it's probably, it's gonna be a learning curve for us in the parks and recreation because we cover a lot of property that faces the streets, especially out here.
Damn, that's a valid point. Ben did tell me too, that also clogs up city machinery, like the trucks do the vacuum, so it just makes.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
Takes toll, eh?
Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge for us, but we'll be fine. We'll, we'll make sure to get in compliance. We're, we've been working hard on it this week. I think Virginia got a phone call at the first of the week and said, hey, uh, there's a ordinance being put in place and we need to get back to City Hall to get some grass out of the road. So, our, our staff come down this week and had to gather and sweep up those clippings. So, we're educating, so it's gonna take some time. The, the bid on the truck is a Ford, a, uh, Ford F, uh, 450, it's a small dump truck for us that we don't have to continue to borrow someone else's. It'll help us with our mulch, the dirts that we need to, uh, to do some things with. A lot of times, we don't need to haul 22 ton or, or 15 ton at one time. Sometimes we just need, uh, two or three ton that we can dump and this will meet our needs. And when we do need big stuff, we'll go with the street department and get some help and use theirs. Plus, this truck doesn't require us to have the CDL to, to drive that. So, money's in the budget. We did bid and it's $9,700. Is the bid came in from Fincher's and that's on the other side of Swans Bridge, right there. This will be the second truck that we've bought from them. Some people call it Fincher, Fincham, Fincher, so it's, it's got five or six different names.
It's Fincher, not Finch.
Okay. And the last thing I want to say before y'all vote on that or clear it, is, uh, I appreciate the phone calls that I got, the prayers that I got for my cancerist that I had in my job, but I did get a clean bill of health Friday, so thank you very much.
Alright. You've heard his presentation for, on the bid. Tim, was that the only bid that came in? Was it from a single source? Okay. Alright.
Make a motion to accept the bid for the F 450 dump truck.
Alright, we have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of a Ford 450 dump truck for parks and recreation. It's been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approve by the normal sign of aye. And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Alright, we're at comments from citizens. Okay. Sure. Yep, you have five minutes and you're on the clock.
I'm Kim Gregg, my husband is Paul Gregg. Um, I sent a letter to each of you through your Newport email and I've talked to a couple of you and I appreciate that and I appreciate you allowing me to be here. It's in reference to the vagrant criminals that we have here in Newport. It has in no way, no shape, no form, in reference to the homeless people that need our help, that want our help, that are searching for a way out of their situation. The police have been bombarded with these people. They're doing a great job. I know you guys are getting calls, I hope, about what's going on with the vagrants in our community and I hope we're trying to address that. But today, I think it would behoove us as a city to start talking about this more in depth. We've been to Knoxville and I don't think we want to become the, the homeless shelters like Knoxville has. These are vagrants there. We've spoken to the police officers there. They say a lot of them don't want help. They say, if I go into your homeless shelter, then you tell me what to do. As long as I'm out here, I can do my drugs, I can do my thieving, I can do my stealing, I can do whatever I choose to do. Since I wrote this letter to you guys lately, and I have since spoke to several people. Newport Federal Bank has installed cameras where their ATM machine is because the homeless were sleeping in their trees there. Brock's has removed a bench. I spoke to an employee there, they said they removed that to keep the vagrants off. Burger King running off vagrants every day, every day. And the lady at Burger King said, she's from Greenville, she said, we have homeless too and vagrants, but Newport vagrants are awful. Said it makes Newport look horrible. Said they are aggressive and she just keeps running them off. The signs that you put out for no panhandling worked and that's all we're asking. Let's do something, let's be aggressive back. You know, signs help. They see it, the police acted on it, it worked. Let's see, what else? Elderly lady on Lincoln Avenue, I went to hand her this later. She has had to install a video camera on her doorbell. There's no sense in that in Soul Town. There's no sense in it. Our front porch, we went on vacation two days, came home, our cushions are on the floor, outside on the ground. Somebody's sleeping on them. There's no sense in it. Right down our street, the fellow lives on the corner of Filbert, Filbert Crosses Over, had his truck stolen, every, or stuff in the back of his truck stolen just recently. had his truck stolen, or stuff in the back of his truck stolen just recently, just coming grab it. You know, it's there for them. Key to corner behind us, they're afraid to open in the mornings, they're afraid somebody's going to jump out on them. Children go to daycare there. These people pass both signs, day in and day out. It's getting very, very dangerous. Seed My Sheep, I've just noticed, has a no trespassing sign after hours. The people they are helping are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're, they're not respecting the help they're receiving if they have to have signs to remove them from their property when they're not there. I mean, it's a telltale sign. Stolen trash cans from a neighbor behind us, just told us that just happened. In the last two to three weeks, my husband and I in restaurants up Cosby Highway, everybody's got to see these people. If you are even in town, you've got to see them. If you go to the numbered streets, they're there. They came from, they started, we bought the house on near the street, got rid of the drugies. They infiltrated the Eighth Street. They got them gone there fast and they're, now they're just everywhere, like cockroaches. And I'm very passionate about this, we've lost a lot of money, a lot of investment. We've had to buy a house to get these people out from in front of us. And we're still working on it and they're coming back, you know. And granted, like, you know, I commend the police officers, it's crazy. It's not them, they're doing it, they're picking, they're questioning them. You know, our judicial system is not the greatest that it could be. I mean, I'm not the one to address them. I did send letters, the same letter to both our judges. So, we need some help. This needs to be addressed and I just, I just hope you guys do something and something soon. And I know we're working on the ordinances, but we have an ordinance that addresses this. It's law ordering and it's in your letter and it spells out vagrant. You know, but I know they pick them up and they send them to jail, they just come right back out. So, there's a big issue. So, I just ask that you guys help out here. And there's a lot of good stuff going on. I met the people from Isaiah, Isaiah 117 and the Hope House, and they got great, great ideas. And we very, very strongly spoke with the Hope House and we said, are these the drugies that you're going to be in there, are they going to be on drugs while they're in there? Nope. She swore to us that it was going to be tested and this and that and the other, so, you know, preferably that's what's going to happen. But I respectfully ask for your help to get this town back to the way it used to be, make it as beautiful as it can be because you're all trying. And the council now is working so much better than any council I've ever seen that I've lived here in Newport. So, I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond?
If I could, Mayor. First, I thank Ms. Kim for recognizing that we do work hard at the police department to try to work with our citizens and, you know, I thought long and hard about what I might say tonight and I just had the opportunity, one of my friends, a lifelong friend met with me a while ago, he lives in Pigeon Falls, he was a policeman and he was diagnosed with leukemia, and he's that far from being one of these homeless people that we're talking about. He's just scraping the edge of having somewhere to live. And again, you know, it really touched my heart. One thing that I read when I was studying a little bit about this vagrancy, and not to start anything from the past, but vagrancy laws were passed after the Civil War. And they were passed because of the freed African Americans that came into towns and they were arrested if they had no visible means of support. In 1983, the Supreme Court of the United States basically struck down the vagrancy laws in this country. And it based on the Fourteenth Amendment, which guarantees us fair and equal treatment under the law. And you know, I would, I would love to see every homeless person have a place to live. And Ms. Kim mentioned Knoxville. I did a little study just in Knoxville, they spend $1 million a year to help with the homeless situation that they have and they call that seed money. And if you want to experience what homelessness looks like, you go down to North Central just about this time of day, get down around that Salvation Army headquarters and see people appear from nowhere. These people, as a study that I just did looking up at Knoxville, 17% of the homeless in Knoxville are disabled. They're not choosing to be homeless. In the past two studies, up to 35% of them said they had some kind of addiction. And we all know what addiction drives. It drives criminal activity. We see that in everything that we do. But it is, you know, the letter did address our city ordinance and our city ordinance on law order has been stricken down, not it particularly, but law ordering laws have been stricken down by the United States Supreme Court. Vagrancy laws basically were stricken down because of their vagueness and that they basically said, poor people don't need to be here, move on or go to jail. And that the city ordinance does not enable us to criminally charge people. We can serve them with citation if they violate our ordinance, but we don't have the authority to arrest someone for being vagrant. I don't know the answer. If I had the answer to homelessness, I would probably have my name on the ballot for president of this country. But it's a situation that we are inundated with. I did want to give you some numbers, just this year, that sort of correlate with what she said. We have made 56 arrests that the initial contact was someone walking. We've made seven arrests with someone from a bicycle. Again, some of the things that were mentioned, the theft from the church vehicle was a one-time incident. We have video of that. They were in a pretty new looking Chevrolet car, the car that came to commit that offense. The gentleman who urinated in front of the old lady, older lady at the church is one of our regulars, if you would. We've dealt with him multiple times. We put him in jail so many times that the jail told us not to bring him back. One of my officers took him to jail and they said, oh God, no, you ain't bringing him back in here. So, I mean, we do our due diligence and we are making arrests among these people. The one thing that was talked about, the theft of the baseball caps at the church, that was at Lincoln Avenue Church, we solved that one and arrested the person who committed that theft. The theft of car parts at Eastport Exxon, we solved that one and charged the person who committed those thefts and recovered some of the property. It's, again, we're thankful that the public sees what we're doing, but I just want you all to know and the public to know that vagrancy laws are no longer enforceable. There's just no way that we can legally arrest somebody for not having the means to provide for themselves. You know, if you look at the vagrancy laws, it basically said someone who had no purposeful way of providing for themselves, you can't legislate poorness. You know, and I'll go back to my heritage, I was raised in a family that my mother didn't have a public job, my daddy worked at Anka, Nelson and I were talking earlier, and I wore somebody else's clothes most of my life. And you know, I can remember when Anka went on strike, my daddy had to go on food stamps, get food stamps so we could eat. You can't legislate poor. And I agree 100% and we address these criminals as we encounter them as criminals, but we cannot address them as being unable to provide for themselves because, again, we're trying to legislate and enforce a law that is in contradiction to the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution. And our guys take an oath to uphold the city ordinances of the city of Newport, the state codes of the state of Tennessee and the Constitution of the United States. And our district attorney general taught our in-service class two weeks and the first thing we did was stand up and quote the preamble to the Constitution. That is what we have to go by. And when the Supreme Court strikes down these laws, because they're vague and arbitrary, we can no longer enforce them. Thank you.
May I say something else?
Say it.
Chief, I would appreciate that. But I in no way, my very first statement was, this was not about the quote unquote homeless people. This was about the criminal vagrants. I made myself very clear, very clear. So, and, you know, I don't write the law, I don't know all those laws, so what he said I'm sure is true, but I wanted to make that clear. I never, we're ready to deal with the lady that's doing the homeless place to maybe donate her some land to build a homeless shelter. I'm talking about the criminals that still thief and continue to do it and it's a revolving door out of, they're arresting them. That's, it's a revolving door out of the court system. That's what I'm addressing. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I'm not as well-versed speaker as my wife. And I appreciate Maurice, we couldn't have taken care of the group up there on River Street and Maurice hadn't assisted me personally. These officers, I've dealt with a lot of them. They're wore out. The sheriff's department's officers are wore out with this courtroom over here. I call it the clown courtroom, Mr. Davison, if you can see my lips on the recorded video. I've dealt with two foreign countries. I've had four fires up here on River Street and one behind Brock's. I've lost thousands of dollars. I've rebuilt that block that I live in, I've rebuilt the block on First Street, I've rebuilt the blocks down here on River Street and Ninth Street, other places. I'm an investor. There's nobody going to come in this city and invest with this filth and these criminals running up and down the street, dragging buggies up through here, throwing trash and their clothes and their underwear and messing in your property. Nobody's going to invest. I'm sick of it. And I know Maurice is probably sick of what he has to tolerate and I know most of these officers are. But it's not my responsibility to handle it. You guys are voted in to do something. I expect action or I'm not going to invest anymore.
Any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
I think that Parks and Recreation was addressed in this letter also. In 1994, and Maurice, I appreciate your research you did and I can't talk what you said. But in 1994, we had two weeks of bad weather in this community that froze unexpectedly, zero degree weather. And a lot of people, water froze, lines busted and they didn't have a place to shower or clean up or have a place they could go to. And in 94, we made sure that the community center was available to our community, taxpayers, non-taxpayers, anyone that needed a place to be sheltered. In 93, when the Blizzard King was the first reaction to this and they even brought the pets to the community center, which now we've worked out a deal where the pets don't come to the shelter, but still we have those abilities as the city government, as a city building for a place for these people to come. In the past year, we had 46 people that have come to the community center to use it for, to clean up. They had frozen water, busted water pipes or didn't have the money to fix something right at that time that they were able to come and use the center and shower and clean. So, from January to September, we had 100 people that came to the center that were homeless. In the process of being homeless, these guys are not a revolving door, the same people that are coming every week to shower, these are different people, a different hundred. There might have been maybe three times that one person came and cleaned up and used to shower. We have churches that provide us with towels. We have a volunteer that comes and gets our towels and takes them and cleans them, washes them, dries them and bring them back. We have churches that fix bags for the homeless people that come and use, they have toothbrushes in them, they have soap, they have deodorant, they have a razor, they have shaving cream. And that's what we do at the center. And it's not a revolving door of the same people. It's a revolving door of different people. And we were afraid that it might become an issue when we had young people in the building or older population that comes during the daytime. So, we have established a time in the last year that these people come and are able to use the city facility. And that is from 1:00 to 3:00. We announce it at Feed My Sheep, that's where a lot of the homeless people go to get their meals and that's where we get the information and that's where we go to and address anything that we may do with our homeless. But that's the story behind what we're doing at the community center. It is a, I will never deny a person an opportunity to clean themselves up. Thank you.
I'd say something that I'd like to talk about, is a proposal for commuter-public transportation in the area here. I think this could help with the current problem for the topic as well.
Thank you.
People had a place to go and a way to get to work, parents are down to jobs just to county over, just to county. And my family can help themselves in some way. So, I, I'm a Chicago native and a married mother of four children, ages 6, 4, 2, and 2 months old. And I would currently be considered homeless. I have been living in the family in a fund, Cosby Highway, for the past three months. I have been attempting to find gainful employment. Before we were there, we lived in Sevier County for two and a half years and I didn't have a hard time finding a job there, I had a hard time keeping a job there and it wasn't due to transportation. I'm not sure what exactly it was due to. I don't want to say discrimination, but it could have something to do with that. Here in this town, just trying to get any job at this point in time, I walked into Hardee's, which has a sign, a light up sign outside that says they're currently hiring for all shifts. I walked in there and I was told that they are not hiring, that they just hired somebody and they, it wasn't until I turned around a little huffy and walked away that the lady actually offered to give me a job application. So, in some cases, homelessness just happens. And that all being said, I haven't given up, I haven't lost hope, I'm setting goals for myself and possibly the community here because I would like to settle down. Like I said, I'm a mother of four young children. My oldest just started school at Northwest and I'd like to make this my home. And I'd like to find a home, to make this my home. So, all of that being said, I place in front of you a proposal for commuter-public transportation. This is not only for people who are low income, this is also for people who currently have jobs over in neighboring counties, mostly Sevier I concentrated on. jobs over in neighboring counties, mostly Sevier, I concentrated on, because they have tens of thousands of jobs. And we have the people here, some of whom don't have a way, but even if they do have a way, if they have dependable transportation over that way, it would save them money and it would generate money into the local community here, having a form of public transportation. So I also recently read an article about TDOT granting Newport close to $1 million in granting funds to beautify the downtown area. I read that they, the plans that they have are about 18 months out into the future. And so let me just walk through my proposal here. So like I already said, I concentrated on Sevier County. East Tennessee and the great Smoky Mountain region is one of America's most beautiful vacation destinations. While Gatlinburg, Pigeon Forge, Sevierville, they receive the glory, Newport is home to many of the hard-working people who make those towns such a great place to visit. There is not much in the way of affordable housing in that area. They do have some projects in the work, in the works, but much of the workforce comes from Newport and other neighboring communities. That means 30 to 50-mile commutes, 60 to 100 miles per day, and 300 to 500 in a 5-day work week, conservatively. This leads to major congestion on the roadways, not to mention the Parkway and the Spur. The daily commute also wreaks havoc on vehicles and roads alike. And with gas prices at 2, conservatively 2.25 per gallon, and wages earned between 7 and 1/4 and $12 on average, it takes quite a toll on the commuter's paycheck as well. The next page covers the routes that I have in mind for the project. And it just, the following page just shows how much money it would behoove a commuter to take the bus instead of driving their mode of transportation there. It cuts back on the congestion, it saves them $200 a month in gas, not to mention repairs and insurance discounts. It would create local jobs. There would be obviously bus drivers. I plan to have it in operation because it is for the workers of the community, so it would run from about 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. so that everybody who works all 3 shifts in neighboring communities can arrive to work on time and then be picked up in the morning if they're on the 3rd shift. Like I said, there are, well, I didn't say this, but TDOT has many available grants for such a project. And Gatlinburg and Pigeon Forge, they receive funds from the TDOT, the Tennessee Department of Transportation, yearly funds. And this, here, I didn't hand this out to you all, but it's the Improve Act Public Transportation, or Public Transit Capital Grants that are available. So I'm here just, I guess, to let you all know, because I spoke with Mr. Fincham before the meeting, and he made it seem as if this is not something that the government of the county could, I don't know, do or support. And I guess he didn't say support, but I'm looking for support. I'm looking for you all to say that you like this idea, you think it would help the community, and be willing to put that in writing so that I can go ahead and move forward and apply for grant funding, and hopefully we can, you know, do something to better the community through having this transportation available to all at an affordable price. I guess, open up to any questions or anything, I've never done this before, this is a first for me.
Well, at this point, Ms. Dubin, I think obviously your time is up now, but, and I don't mean to cut you off, but this project looks to be one that would be better suited for another agency prior to us. You know, we've heard from the Greigs and from you about some very complicated issues that are going to be difficult to address, especially in an open forum like this. You know, we can obviously talk about how these issues can be resolved, but they're complex. And obviously, there are no simple solutions to complex problems. I've heard that all my life, and I'm sure most of you would probably agree. But, so at this point, I think your proposal, while we, I think, well, personally, I could support the effort that you're putting in, but I don't know that it would be something that the city of Newport would be able to accomplish in any short, in the short term or in the long term for that matter. However, there are other agencies that would probably be better suited to do that. I've spent most of the day in Knoxville with the East Tennessee Human Resource Agency. They do run transportation programs, and this might be something that they might be capable of implementing a lot faster and a lot better than we could. So if you'd hang around for a little while, I'll be glad to give you some information from them.
Sure.
And we can go from there.
Okay.
As far as the Greg's proposal, obviously, I admire your passion, and I'm certainly glad to see you guys come in and force your opinions, but as I said, it is complex, and I don't know how we get around some of the things that you've brought up. Our police department is doing their level best to control the criminal aspect of vagrancy, but, you know, I don't know what else we can do. There were 16 county mayors at the meeting at the Development District today. There were another 13 city mayors there, and they're all dealing with the same issue that you just brought up. The jails are overflowing, Lakeshore Mental Hospital has closed, there are no mental facilities in the, in the area that can accommodate those kind of issues. We've mentioned that they all have, most of these folks do have some mental issues. That's difficult to address, and they're not going to do any good by putting them in jail. So at this point, I don't know what else we can do. But we certainly take it under advisement, and we will work as hard, diligently as we can to try and rectify some of the issues that you brought up. But like I said, I admire your passion. Would you counsel like to add anything else to?
It's a heavy subject.
Yes, very much.
Very, very heavy.
Well, I think if something is seen, it needs to be reported.
Absolutely.
So the police can document it and check it out. And we have verifiable, verifiable statistics that we can go back to. I'm a police officer myself. I see homeless people over in Danredge, those truck drivers bring them over there with the tons. And it's like the mayor said, a lot of these people are dealing with mental health issues, which the town of Danredge, the city of Newport, we do not have the resources to deal with these type of people. And by these mental health facilities shutting down, it's making our jobs 100 times worse than what it's ever been. Because jail is not always the answer. Sometimes they leave us no choice, and that's where they wind up, but it's a temporary fix, and then generally they're out the next day. So I mean, you can't just say, hey, there's the city limits hit it.
I have had numerous complaints this summer about similar issues, especially about prowling at night, being in the backyard, coming between houses. And as Mr. Hanson pointed out, one of the first things I ask is, well, when they were there, did you call the police? And they'll say, well, no, you know. And the best advice that we can give anybody is when you see somebody in your yard or prowling around at night, call the police and let them check them out, because they will come. It's this one lady that came down last week, was complaining about people coming through between her house and the house next door, on bicycles, on foot, all hours of the night. And I told her, I said, call it in. And then the very next week, she came down and said, oh, said you were right, said they were out there Saturday night, I called the police, and said they were there in just a few minutes, and they arrested somebody. And so, I mean, it's simple. I never have understood why. And I've pointed out repeatedly to people that will call and complain about people messing around their houses, and the police don't do anything about it. And the first thing I'll ask is, did you call it in? No. Well, how in the heck were we supposed to do anything about it? You know, we don't know about it. You know, so absolutely good advice and correct, report it. If you see somebody where they shouldn't be, report it and let us hound them a little bit. Because that's basically what we can do, is try to hound them till they leave and find a greener pasture somewhere else, because you can't just run them off. It's a sad deal that we're having to put up with, because I, like I say, I've had many calls on it this summer. And I see it myself. You know, every day if you're out here anywhere, you'll see all these tattooed-up people on bicycles. And so, but the solution, I don't know, you know, other than like I say, to hound them and hopefully get them to move on. I will say this, and I don't want to seem callous, or, you know, like Maurice said, I grew up about as poor as anybody. And I don't want to do anything to hurt the poor. But I can tell you, the more lucrative you make it to be here, the more of them are gonna be here. And it's a double-edged sword. You know, the fewer amenities that you have for them, the fewer of them hang around. The more amenities that you provide for them, the more are gonna come. And that's a sad fact. But that seems to get lost sometimes in the rush to try to do something that we feel is good, and the motives are good, and people are big-hearted, and they want to help the folks that really need help. But the more amenities you have, the more problems you're gonna have. I can guarantee it. You can tell to any city that has put a lot of outreach programs out there, and their homeless community has doubled, tripled, quadrupled because they come to where they can get pre-staff.
I agree with that. We're more connected now than we ever have been. 30, 40 years ago, we had a central charities fund here that went through the police department and gave them $10 to get them $10 worth of gas to get them out of town, or $10 to stay, and they got out the next day. But people knew about that 30, 30, 40-some-odd years ago. And like I say, we're more connected now. The last homeless guy I dealt with in Danredge was from Florida, and he knew about things going on in Newport downtown here. So these people talk with each other, they communicate, and they tell them where the, that's like James said, they tell them where the amenities are. Nothing wrong with helping people, but we don't. People will take whatever you give them.
About calling the police, may I address that?
Sure.
Several years ago, many years ago, somebody stung a seedling on my property. I told this officer personally, I said, we've all known him by nature, and you know that seedling disappeared in just a few hours? Just several years ago. Do all of you know Dorothy Merle? You know Dorothy Merle?
I know about Dorothy Merle.
Yes, I was a male. Well, plain, old lady, lived up on the corner. Saw something going on down there at Lower Heights, drive down. Where is she? Nobody knows where she is. She called the police. Just about, about a year, less than a year ago, down my neighborhood, somebody set a fire down there, and the fire department come, and the first thing out there and laugh. Neighbor down there called the police. I called the police. Officer Williams in here, he's the one that's funny. I called the police a few, what was it, a month or so ago? Said I'd like to request the officer to meet with me. What's it about? I said, I want to pass some information to you. What's it about? I said, well, you just forget. Guess what? Three police officers showed up. That's some sensitive information I didn't want passed on because it comes across the scanner, that man on so-and-so called police to give information about blah, blah, blah. And these criminals listened to the scanner. And it was pretty good information. We got three police officers, went with me, and next morning, went through all of these houses, and they come up with a big criminal. So I ain't calling the police is not the answer. I called the director, the doctor. She was in love that they could give me the people's names, board me. And I said, well, would you send them to me? She said, okay. What's your address? I gave my 614, where I left home address. Well, she said, but you call from 501. I said, yeah, I've got 501, blah, 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 and I got the address. So calling the police is not the correct solution unless you can get emergency situations straightened out, too. People don't want their houses burned down because they call and tell someone somebody else. They don't want to pass sensitive information to officers they can't trust. You know, a lot of stuff's going on in this city and league straight now. That's for the job.
And I do admit the best of my ability. And I'm doing my job here at the city of Newport the best of my ability, and these other gentlemen and ladies are too.
I can assure you, there are a lot of people in this room that are doing the best they can to make this city a better place to live in. So I can't address some of the issues that you've talked about, some of the individual complaints, but I can assure you that people here that care, just care about the city just as much as you do.
Well, there's no doubt that anybody that's ever looked at newspaper and lived here knows that there's been bad apples coming through the police department. We've tried our best to root those folks out. We've tried our best to improve the image of the police department and to improve the quality of the officers that we recruit. The best efforts that you can do, you're gonna get some bad apples. We try to say we've tried to root those people out, and a lot more, I feel like, that the bad apples are gone. I don't know of any bad apples. I've heard no rumors or innuendos or reports of any bad apples being at the police department now. If I did know, I would be doing everything I can do to get rid of them. I can guarantee that. The Dorothy Merle case, I worked at the police department when that took place, I do not think she called the police. She disappeared without a trace, and nobody had an idea where she went. Do not think she called the police. Think she heard a noise and went to inspect it on her own and disappeared, because it was days and days and days until an informant come forward and gave us a clue on what had happened. But I'm positive, from my recollection of that case, that she did not call the police. For the other things, I can't speak to. You and I have talked about your fire issue up there, I don't know, and I think even Maurice and I talked about that at one point some years back. I can't answer that either. You know, I have no tolerance for shoddy or poor police work or any other kind of work the city does. And I can promise you that if I find out of any officer that is compromising any case, crime, anything like that, they'll be in jail if I have anything to do with it. And I'd like to thank Maurice, feels the same way about that. And so as far as what the dispatchers are doing, we have, we have no control over that. That's, we contract a service with them, they do not work for us. You know, if we have an issue, I call up our, and I address it with the director if I have a problem. And I've found that they always seem, they always address what I call about. I've not had any problems with the dispatching. None has been reported to me. I've not had any problems with the dispatching, none has been reported to me. That's the first complaint I've heard about the dispatching up there. But any complaint that comes to my attention, I look into. I mean, I have a proven track record on that. I don't ignore anything that comes to me.
Is the new emergency, units turbine, is that the one that mixes the signal to the police officers if they can't pick that up?
I don't know. Does that, are the new radio scrambler, Maurice?
It's capable, it's not being utilized. I know the sheriff department is wanting to beta test it, if you will, to see how it works, if it improves communications. But it is scramivable, or it's not scrambled anymore, it's actually coded or something, but it's, it goes to a different frequency tone, and it's not supposed to be scanned. That's why the regulations, I have dual analog and digital capability.
And what I would suggest is that if you have sensitive information that you're not passing along over the phone, that you just say that you need, like you said, you just need, you need to talk to an officer. And I mean, it's because you don't give a reason why they're still supposed to send somebody. You know, it's their job to try to find out what's going on to protect the officer. You know, but people can say, I need the law up here, and if they don't inquire, and they go up there and there's two fighting with knives or something. So it's their job to protect the officer and to find out what they're walking into. That's why they're diligent in asking, what's this about? Because that happens, I've seen it happen, when I worked down there myself, I walked into calls like that where I'm thinking, what the heck? When I get there and they're saying, there he goes, there he goes, he's got again, and I, you know, and all they say was go up there and talk to somebody. So, you know, there's a reason behind that, and that is officer safety. But if you tell them, look, there's nothing going on here, I just need to talk to somebody, I've got a problem, and I need some advice on it. They have to send somebody, you don't have to tell them what it is, and I mean, that's that.
Wouldn't that be a good thing to publish in the paper so all the citizens can know that they feel secure about calling the police officers when there's a problem?
Well, I mean, I don't know. I would have thought that was a common sense thing, but I mean, you know.
You want to have one. You stand there like, what's the call?
Well, like I say, that's, that's the first complaint I've heard like that.
Are there any other comments from citizens? If not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I like the motion to adjourn. Take it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, it's been properly secured, it was wrote by a normal sign of I. All opposed. Motion carries.